Okay, if the school board would please like to come down and be, have a picture taken with the kids in Noah, that'd be great. I guess I can't call you kids anymore. Let's see. How should we do this? Carrie, help me. You could do the sideways thing if you want. Turn sideways. So all of you will be on CNN tonight. Parents, I want to tell the parents, thank you for sending your children to Seattle Public Schools. And with that, you're free to leave. Again, congratulations to our valedictorians, our students, and our parents. Thanks so much for coming tonight. And thank you again to Noah Purcell for honoring us tonight with his presence and his remarks. With that, I'd like to move on with our next recognition. We still have a couple more recognitions to do tonight, and we've got a group of South Shore students waiting to perform for us, so... Alright, our next recognition is the Seattle Housing Authority. We've been recognizing our premier partners who stand shoulder to shoulder with us in educating our youth and partnering with us in so many ways that we can't do on our own. Seattle Housing Authority has about 6,000 of our students in public housing, and they have just been wonderful partners standing beside us in terms of talking about the importance of student attendance and other ways we can support students. So with that, I'd introduce James Bush, who's going to come forward and give a little bit more of an introduction.
Good afternoon, Board, and Dr. Nyland, thank you for the opportunity to recognize another one of our premier partners. Seattle Housing Authority is the largest affordable housing provider in Seattle. SHA provides subsidized rental housing and rental assistance to nearly 35,000 people in Seattle who are low income. In addition to providing high-quality housing, SHA offers students and families an array of programs to help them meet the needs beyond just housing. Seattle Housing Authority provides housing to 1 in 10 Seattle Public School students, and they are spread out through almost all of our Seattle Public Schools. SHA and Seattle Public Schools are working together to improve educational outcomes for those 5,500 school-aged youth who are so served by both organizations. SHA is critical in our partnership efforts to eliminate opportunity gaps and ensure that all students, especially those who are served jointly by both systems, have access to an education that prepares them for college and career. We are proud to have SHA as a partner and to ensure all students have access to high-quality education that prepares them for college, career, and to thrive in Seattle. We are pleased that both SHA and SPS have benefited from cross-sector hiring by bringing staff and their experience into new positions. Due to this position or partnership, SPS has recently hired Katherine Pananen, who serves on my team, and as our first housing education manager, and we're grateful to working with Courtney Cameron, who brought her experience in Seattle Public Schools to the Seattle Housing Authority. Tonight, we are joined by the SHA team and their executive director, Andrew Lofton. Please join me in welcoming him to the stage to share a couple words and a brief slideshow. And we will take a picture after the next recognition, which is the nursing group.
Thank you, James. Dr. Nyland and school board members, thank you very much for this opportunity to address you. We are honored to be recognized as one of your partners. It is a distinct honor of ours because the relationship is a very special one for the Seattle Housing Authority. We, in our strategic plan, education of our residents is a premier objective for us. We recognize that education is really the key pathway for individual and family success, and we are committed to doing all we can to give our residents the opportunity to excel in the classroom. This partnership is special to us because we both have come to the realization that we have a very distinct common goal, and that goal is the education of our children, the improving the academic achievement that those children have, and creating a pathway for their success. This is a unique partnership. It's one that is a leading partnership that is being replicated throughout the country. We are one of the national, this partnership is one of the national leaders throughout the United States, and other school districts and housing authorities are learning from our experience and creating those same partnerships in their own communities for the same purpose. As James indicated, 1 in 10 of our student residents are students in Seattle Public Schools. 2/3 of our families live in public housing, and about another 3 live in our tenant-based voucher program. Students are enrolled in all Seattle Public Schools throughout the city. This map details the schools in which our students attend. This map looks very similar to the housing that we own and manage. That is also throughout the entire city. The interesting part for us is that as the students, the families that we serve that are, have students going to your classrooms, they earn about $17,000 of area median income. That compares to the area median income of families in the city of Seattle of $111,000. So you can see they are very low-income individuals, but they have the same dreams and aspirations as everyone else does, and education is really a pathway to allow them to achieve those. This partnership has been in existence for a couple of years. We've been able to register 500 students into the College Bounce Scholarships. We've awarded over 40 college scholarships to SHA youth. We've also housed five homeless families as part of our pilot program, Home From School, in which we are identifying, in conjunction with family support workers at the school, homeless families that are attending Bailey Gatzler Elementary School, and we've been able to find homes for five of those families that started the school, started the school year homeless. This is a picture of four students, four of 10 students who we awarded what we call Dream Big Scholarships to this year, and as you might recognize, one of those students was just up here as well as a valedictorian. Nia from Franklin High School was awarded a scholarship as she's one of the residents of our housing. So we're extremely proud of Nia. We're extremely proud of all of our students who have been working diligently to improve their academic performance. At the bottom of the slide, you'll see just a picture of one of our housing projects, and we try to do this in a way that's very thoughtful to recognize the needs of families as we produce new housing for low-income individuals and families throughout the city of Seattle. So as we continue this partnership, our goals are to continue to work with the Seattle Public Schools to close the opportunity gap, to work with the Seattle Public Schools, and we focus on, in the coming, this year and the coming years, creating a pathway that we can work with our students to make sure that they improve attendance. Obviously, attendance is a big factor in success in school, and we want to make sure that our students have the best possibility for success as possible. So we're going to be emphasizing that along with the Seattle Public Schools, so the message gets to our students, and they definitely will be able to take advantage of all of the things that are going to be offered in the classroom. I want to also thank Dr. Nyland and his staff for their openness and willingness to work with us in creating this partnership. I thank the staff that are here from the Seattle Housing Authority, who actually do the work. I want to acknowledge them as well. And again, just appreciate your openness and willing to work with us and partner with us for that common goal of improving the education outcomes of our students. Thank you.
Thank you again. Just means so much to be able to work together with you on a common goal, so thank you. Actually, we recognized Seattle Housing Authority at a regional superintendent's meeting this last week and introduced them to our colleagues throughout the Puget Sound area as our, one of our premier partners, so again, thank you. We're going to go on to the nurses' recognition, and then we'll come back and do photos for both. So May 10th was National School Nurse Day, and we have some very, very special nurses joining us tonight. We've heard about nationally board-certified teachers. We're going to hear tonight about nationally-certified school nurses, so welcome and congratulations, yes.
Thank you very much. I want to present three of our superstars. 1/3 of our school nurse corps is nationally certified, and tonight we have three new members of that rarefied group. We have Omna King. We have Lynn Carvath. And we have Liz Coe. I just want to say a few words about national board certification. As I said, 1/3 of our nurses have gone this extra step to pass their national board exam. School nurses continually work to expand and deepen their knowledge to help students cope with and overcome health barriers to learning. I want to congratulate these three nurses and all of our nurses on School Nurse Day.
Stay here. We will invite the board down to congratulate you, take a picture. After we're done with that, we'll do a picture with the Seattle Housing Authority, and after that, we'll ask the board to sit in the audience and hear the presentation from our students.
On behalf of the school board and your audience, you guys rock. Awesome, 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 awesome. I'm going to pass the microphone around. I'd like your staff members to tell us how long they taught, their first and last name for staff members, and when we get to our extraordinarily talented students, first name and which grade, and you pass it on, okay? Thanks, guys.
I am Tracy Thompson, and I was the director of the play. This is my ninth year teaching.
Emily Coulter, and this is my 10th year of teaching, and I was a choreographer.
I'm Laura Tyler, and I was a producer, all about the money to me, and it's my 30th year of teaching.
I'm Richard Schlicksing, I'm the music teacher, and I'll let you do the math. I started teaching in 1977.
My name is Eube, I'm in the 5th grade, and yeah.
My name is Nathan, I'm in 5th grade.
My name is Jamela, and I'm in the 4th grade.
I'm Diego, I'm in the 4th grade.
I'm Charlotte, and I'm in 5th grade.
My name is Ellery, and I'm in 3rd grade.
My name is Maya, I'm in 5th grade.
I'm Finley, and I'm in 5th grade.
I'm Lucas, and I'm in 5th grade.
My name is Kylie, I'm in 5th grade.
My name is Sanaya, and I'm in 5th.
I'm in 3rd grade.
My name is Annika, I'm in 5th grade.
My name's Leila, and I'm in 5th grade.
My name is Lana.
My name is Lan, and I'm in 3rd grade.
My name is Gabe, and I am in the 5th grade.
My name's Solomon, and I'm in 1st grade.
My name's Reyna, and I'm in 5th grade.
My name's Lena, and I'm in 5th grade.
My name is Maia. I'm in 5th. I'm in 3rd grade.
Thank you. Can we give these folks a standing O? They earned it. It's what it's all about. Thank you ever so much. Just thank every one of our children. All 53,000 could have an arts and music experience every school day of the year. Thank you.